He has something he's in our houses.
Let's call it the regular meeting of the board. Uh, we go to local. Uh, thank you.
Yeah.
That's tomorrow.
Yeah.
Being done.
sincere love, we know she's.
I know what's wrong. I'm here.
The United States of America and the Republic of which stands a nation under our individual. Okay, and that's just.
And maybe we can extend the job this this evening. Thank you. Um. How we can. I think. And you know, it's clear. And life will continue on if you do have something. Thanks, Marty. All right, uh, we need the action on minutes, uh, motion to, I need a motion to. Two minutes for the regular meeting. So. Motion, annual, second, Becky, um, any question? On favor. Within a figure. Uh, for the chair, the next regular meeting of the board will be Wednesday, January third. We have the first report, uh, at five thirty. The next meeting of the AOS board will be on Thursday, December seventh at six P M. It will be held in person at Central Office. The AOS ninety-three F Y twenty-five budget vote, which is a public vote by residents of all towns, will be held at G S B on December twentieth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. So. Anybody's welcome to come and vote, uh, for their, the AOS budget. Taking for the AOS budget or pardon, but it's so long. Um, so now we also have our AOS ninety-three report from our. And the.
I have a question. Um. Okay, um. So I think, um, the most important thing was the proposal for the provision of a new position um, for the entire AOS district, not the this particular school, and, um, that would be a security and technology director.
Hmm.
Um. And maybe Alex can tell me whether or not the very long and detailed description of the position is that available to the body?
It was certainly made public at the, um, at the AOS board meeting and in that board's tradition.
Right.
And, um, and therefore it's a public document that you easily share with all of them.
Right, it's a really good description and I don't want to mangle anything by, uh, by trying to describe every single, um, responsibility that this person would be expected to carry out. Um, but it certainly sounded as though it's a really necessary thing. Um, I would certainly support it, so. Well, if I'm not sure what the best way is for you all to get information, um, I want it to be really obvious.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I could use some guidance on that. Yes, it took.
It's. It's about a little dark down there.
Um, so. Everybody wants a good thing, it's complex. Um, so this is. And somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, um, this is a formalization of a number of the responsibilities that he has already been carrying out. Um, and, uh, this would be a full-time position. Um, and the responsibilities would range from security to education to, um, grant applications, which if anybody here is ever applied, who gets, you know, how it's kind of seeming and important.
Pass that in.
Um, so, yeah, that, uh, that was, that was a very important part.
Do you want me to read, um, from the rules and responsibilities doc that was shared? Just the bullets, the basics?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, well, so you're looking for our feedback about.
Yes.
Okay, and you need that before tomorrow, the.
It would be great.
Okay.
Um.
I think what we could do is drop the description into your board, uh, documents.
Okay.
Shared drive, would that work? Okay.
And.
Yeah. How much exactly we would give before tomorrow if you all are voting tomorrow, so.
Um, so to touch on the KJ side of that, um, so we have a KJ role right now. We just, um, did some regard methodology for, um, I can't remember, John. Um, and so is this piece that she's referring to in addition to KJ? Or are we kind of reorganizing it? And there's potential that KJ and then we may have this other person that sort of steps into the parts that isn't KJ's anymore.
So currently KJ serves has two jobs. He has a full-time teaching job or a full-time job at Grace All Day that's on teachers' contracts. And they're on the teachers' contract for his, you know, his user experience, et cetera, and as the, uh, sorry, technology integrator, as it's called, at Grace All Day, and that's a hundred and eighty days a year. He also has a fifty-day-a-year contract with the AOS to provide school system-wide, um, I T reaction. That includes support for every group and for all the, uh, school technology coordinators and integrators. All of the things that he organizes that he would need that to be, and that, and it's all great. And he also provides all the, um, I T support for, uh, Darwin Central Office and all that. And we do like to create this whole migration that we're doing to the new, uh, central office if you think who's supporting us or not. And making sure that all our, you know, computers are on, getting that all our P D vision system. And, uh, so that's been what I was reading. We have one of the pieces of, one of the, part of that document, or is, uh, uh, maybe it's the second document that went with the new job description. I find the growth of I T in school system over the last fifteen years. And it's tremendous how much things were put on. Um, to the, you know, we have, uh, more and more data needs, more and more technology needs, more and more opportunities for funding, et cetera, that need to be pursued at every, any school. And, uh, and, and more and more need to consolidate our data collection and recording to be a. Um, what has happened in the last couple of years, though? Um, and is that it, there's been new opportunities to enhance our security systems and our crisis communication. And that's why we're taking it up for every building. Um, KJ recently this year submitted a grant. Um, he wrote an area that had submitted through the central office. Um, uh, that was awarded by the Department of Defense for about four hundred thousand dollars award to, uh, do a complete technology system, um, of security for the Grace All Day building. And it's really what every building needs. And, but it's, it's all, you know, dealing with all the key, um, all the entries so that they're digitally controlled and monitored and secure, and so that we have hidden cameras inside and outside the building, and that it all ties into a crisis communication plan. And we have now a crisis communication system that we see maintained. And to have this, to try to do all that and everything else that's in the job description that we'll put in your folders in fifty days, the school system is not, issue's not done, but it's not possible. And what it's been experienced the last at least two years. Um, is that KJ is basically working close to three hundred and sixty-five day a year to get all this stuff. And so the, the solution that was, you know, being proposed is that we make a full-time I T director for the AOS and we consider you part of the central office. And that KJ could work two hundred and eighty-five day a year on that one job in Grace All Day. Now, we're not saying it's KJ because we don't design jobs for our people.
Sure.
We're just saying that somebody with KJ's skills, you know, would advertise that job for the top job. And, uh, and, and we would love to get, um, a new position. A new position there in salary, which is, which is based on what KJ makes in his hundred and eighty school days and plus his contractor J O S for fifty, which is ninety-six thousand dollars. And a, um, a health insurance, uh, piece in it, and, uh, the associated benefits. And, and a little bit of, you know, the kind of standard things that follow in the visual and system protecting the health, et cetera. So that's the money we look on the forty-five hundred fifty thousand to Central Office. Which is our cloud and the certain part of the central office we thought. So, um, so that's what the, that's the significant piece of the increase is by adding the whole position to the central office. The, the job description.
Is that where it should be? Not the, but that's the.
Um.
In central office, is that where he would be located?
If, if we define a corner, it's a poison range of, um, because it's, we don't really have a room. We're looking at a closet.
But it's all would be, even be part of this and.
It's team. Yes, and employed by the AOS that simply tends to see if we're not an individual school. And then you hire a separate person to work for Grace All Day as a.
Which is.
Well, I can't speak for Grace All Day, but I can tell you that they've already been down to do it. They need more out there, and they had somebody this year because they just knew that, you know, KJ couldn't handle school on the own end, you know.
That's a good, a good, good bit of information there, so, but I. I feel like I'm, I would be on board for us to, to do that, um. You know, obviously how that plays out in the budget, you know, that's a piece to the puzzle. However, I think that this is a major piece, um, we're not getting less technological, we're getting more technological. And, um, I think it's super important for somebody that is fully dedicated to that role, and so I'm on board for it. I think it's a wonderful asset.
Yeah.
I think it would need somebody moving forward more and more, people. That's what I think.
So you want.
So that's. So how would you?
Yeah, not using the.
Yeah.
Oh, thanks.
Maybe this, as kind of, um, it leads to the, the job requirements.
July first, two thousand and twenty-four, beginning of this. And then we'll move on to our student conference report. And now I'm going to do that kind of.
Yep, I have just two things, so I'll do mine first. Mine are short. Um, the Bath Tech Director, her name was Julie Kenny, for those of you that knew her, has resigned. She's going to be an elementary school principal. And a new, new, uh, director has already been hired, and her name is Paula Callan. And, uh, Lindsay's looking forward to working with her, so that's the first bit. And the next part is Pathways and Compass programs. Um, the agreements are up at the end of this school year, which is in June. And considering the ongoing staffing issues that we've had and the transportation issues that we've had with, um, those programs, the proposal at this time is not to renew those programs.
Uh, okay, cool. Can I ask some questions before you go, and then maybe those are the only things.
Those are the only two things, and I'm just sharing them, uh, for Lindsay, but I'll try and answer your question, as long as it's not too tricky.
Um, so. You may not have the answer, and I totally understand that, what happens with the kiddos that do these services? What happens in those situations?
That's going to be a school-based decision. Each school will do their own thing. Really, the big change for you is the students that you have coming here with no longer tuition in to come here.
Right, we already have staffing and.
You do.
Yeah, so obviously Bristol could manage the favorites of the Bristol to do what they've been doing. So that part's the easy, that's the easy part of the question.
And the budget piece, you'll hear more about from Peter when he does his bit tonight.
Do you feel like that will be a detriment at all, given that we have everything here already with the kids currently? Do you think that it's going to cause any issue not having that, which is like, does it mainstream those kiddos? Does it still give them?
So speaking for the kids who are Bristol residents who are in the program, I don't, it doesn't change a lot for them. Because the program services we offer, we keep a theme, whether we call it Compass or it's special education with a behavior support program for kids who are not, um. The difference could be that there would be less kids being serviced in that program, but that program isn't like they all sit in their room. It's not like that, so, um, so that part, there's pros and cons clearly, but it's, they, I think it's mostly a wash in terms of it, it will be a similar, um, opportunity for the kids to get this part thing. And the nuanced difference is with pathways gone, we don't send kids to a life skills program anymore. The kids that are Bristol residents, that would be eligible to be at Pathways would be with us. Unless we couldn't meet their needs and then Kelly Stokes, the special educator, you know, at God I E P T, meaning we would do a more restrictive environment with more supports, but that, um, so that's what would happen for that program.
From staff-wise, would we have an overabundance? Is there a possibility that?
So based on the current staff, the current population that we send to Pathways and that we have in Compass, it would be a similar need for Bristol, so.
Okay.
We wouldn't necessar, we wouldn't necessarily, we're not responsible for educating the residents of the other towns who've been participating in Compass. So theoretically, they go back to their own school manages what their education looks like. And then we take back life skills, so the staffing we have can manage in terms of hours, for sure. And, um, it would just require some training because our staff haven't worked with a lot of students with life skills needs. And each kid's different, so we would, you know, we've had kids with those kind of needs before.
So we wouldn't have to, like, decrease of, um, you know, any staff hours and?
No, and we also, I know of two people who aren't planning to return as a techs in special education in general. So I think we would, as we get closer to March and April, we look at who's leaving, what our population is going to be, you know. But the F T E that we put in the budget would probably stay as left. Right now, in working with our special educator, the F T E would be the same as the needs we have right now. I think that's where we left it, right? I think it was the same, so.
Okay. But I think I have another question, but I lost it, so.
It's not affecting every school, not exactly the same, but we have the advantage of having people with that training, so it's not like, oh, no, now we can manage kids that have needs.
Knowing that this is what is going to be happening likely, um, are we, are you sort of creating some kind of plan to make sure that all that is involved with this change is going to be prepared for it?
So that's the, you know, once, I think we were waiting for all the board meetings when people got to, you know, say their piece of down to the fact that the recommendation is they're not going to move, um. Then I worked with Peter and then he's been through a budget that says, here's the things we will need to, that have a cost for resources, but let me give them the students the incentive to have it.
Essentially, that's.
Yeah, give it, give the C D we need, and making sure we have adequate staff, like, so then my fingers are crossed that more people will end up with different life choices for next year because I'm a very strong and skilled staff at this time.
All right, you're up with the renovation project update.
So the construction renovation project update, um. The remarkable thing that I get to say in very few words is that the H V A C designs. Do not underestimate how much time, energy, and cost it requires me being able to tell you that's. And I think that, you know, the whole community owns John Carroll, tremendous thanks for, uh, for really piecey, you know, filling the gap between all the contracted parties, the construction company, the owners, reps, the school, and the history of building and, uh, making it possible for someone to design an H V A C system. Uh, the institutional knowledge that John brought to it was, it would have been impossible to have an H V A C design, John, John, so. Um, but it has been done. The gym lighting, um, is going to be changed, uh, to appropriate application by end of the year. Gym lighting, you need, uh, functionally, whether it's a, because the devices that want, uh, the light wants. The schedule, the right schedule is sort of a week delay, if I understand, but, but I'm not going to say that it will be. This is a, uh, efficiency name is specified, I think, and provide the.
Yes.
Students have a kind of support and look on Peter.
So it'll get better.
But, uh, there's the, but that is in works. The north addition, the subgrade compaction work, uh, past inspection, and I think concrete started for it today, and it's that one, you know. Um, and that was.
Yeah, a lot.
There's, um, the, on the security upgrade, speakers have arrived for the school wire intercom. And, uh, and one of, often gets the I T closet built, we can begin installing those. John, you want to update us on the system location and, uh, pump house?
Yep, we looked at it with today, spent quite a bit of time trying to find the right spot. Uh, one of the original locations they were talking about was in the ball field, we put the no to that. Um, the alcove between the library and the, so it's the backside of the gym, there's an alcove in there.
Yeah.
So we don't think there's legend there, but they're going to date to make sure. And if there's no legend there, that this was an underground tank will end up living.
Okay.
The original intent was to put the pumps in the building where the current pump is. But that has to be a, uh, minimum of one-hour rated room and a one-hour rated corridor to the exterior of the building. So it costs quite a lot of work. So the thought is to put a pump house out on top of the tank, which would be kind of over by the generator behind the building.
Yeah.
So it's kind of out of sight, and that would end up being a vertical lift pump instead of a.
This is fire.
This is fire.
Fire, that's, yeah.
One hour.
For.
Fire.
There are fires, it would take an hour for that to fall.
It'd be quite a lot of construction because there's three or four doorways in there, so each fire door, you can figure about three thousand dollars for each door. It would be cheaper, better for long term, it would be much better to have the pump out back. The maintenance of it would be much easier. It's easier to get to. The vertical lift pumps are a really good, high-quality pump that will last for years. Well, there's some exploratory work to do, and as soon as that is done, they'll come to us with a plan.
Thank you, John. Um, on the financial side, just to update financially, um, we haven't figured out a cost yet. We've, uh, often just, you know, go, uh, we've been, brings our entire sort of expenses paid to date to just over seven, nine thousand. In case you have any, you know, thought that, you know, um, I had to scratch my head, I said, why are we on that? Why are we on that deep in, but, yeah, it's sort of analysis to that. You know, once all this all started and then you're engaged back in the design, the building is going to get really, really fast. And you gotta look at what we're, uh, like, uh, like eight months ago and by, uh, it's just not the expensive part of it. The, um, the, the amount of time dealt deal, um, that's put into, um, mitigating potential cost increases has been significant, and raising the cost of, of the hours we need to be working on this. So we're projecting there, um, be for the whole job, um, to go up significantly. And, uh, we're going to rely on, uh, you know, the soft cost contingency that will cover that. But the amount of money they're saving us in these negotiations, I think, you know, John and Jen know a bit about this, has been significant, has been in many hundreds and thousands of dollars of things they were able to negotiate out and, and represent strong. So I expect that to continue. And, uh, working very close to a band, you monitor all the potential costs, you know, cost shifts and to manage them. And thus far, um, we're in pretty rich faith on everything that was in our P I T um, versus the, you know, what's actually happening. And, uh, being able to kind of use some contingency areas we go, but also make it into a, because again, we're not that fine in the project. However, we have identified a few things that, um, we're not able to do in the new school of the projects, and that are giving us starts to be things that we need to think about doing. Uh, one of these is the generator. We, we knew that the generator wasn't in the R F P, that the generator, you know, was needed to do, like, that, you know, we had some, you know, um, expectations they wanted to achieve, and one year we need those. And, uh, so we've been working, you know, around to see what kind of generation building, you know, what costs it actually did. And the generator that is scheduled at a thousand dollars to. But it's not the project, the project is still defined still. It's an additional hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars that the facility, you know, that's, uh, that anyway. Anyway, so that's a, that's a set of new items. Um, another new item, identified as the leaders, the center, is the, um, the original R F P um, called for the, basically dismantling the old kitchen and salvaging it. And the expectation was we'd be able to use that just all we needed to replace the old unit to. Um, that was the, the, and, uh, in looking at you show no, the future of the superduper, but looking at the realities of the efficiency, the other, and the, and the positive installing, and getting new equipment. And the proof, and the way the equipment actually is operating now in terms of its ability to keep the pool at the right, at the right temperature to serve it. The, um, it's just been a, a significant improvement in, in getting new. But that comes at I X. It's hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the equipment, seventy-five thousand dollars for the equipment, so new kitchen equipment is two hundred thousand dollars. The, um, in addition, the inch comms that were spent, um, in that whole system. Um, once it was all in the new and south, and actually was able to, we didn't have it, we had to see a request for additional fifty-six thousand dollars worth of equipment. So we get up to just under four hundred thousand dollars because that is a minority. But that we believe, uh, we're working. So we're adjusting that now, and we're, uh, and talking about a different funding strategy than that. Uh, no, I think it continues to be, you know, we, we have a, we do, we do contingency project, we haven't gotten deep enough in the product, along with some spending on things that are any part of the product. The contingency for what we're doing, not a contingency for the things that are outside. So to go to the contingency too fast would not be pretty. Um, but it is there, and we'll, over time, review that. And, and, and probably sort of new invoice, we just make a chart and company in new shape, order this resolved in some way, it's supposed to be an understanding of how we're going to um, get into that contingency. We also have, you know, some brothers and daughters that have, you know, they were intending to go to the community center. There's a reasonably good, um, you know, kind of, uh, argument that that kitchen, but it is. But we haven't really kind of tried to tap into a lot of that kind of, you know, thinking just yet. Because we don't need to go by this, because he's going to be identifying, you know, to go to the block through the. Um, but we know that that's another source. And we also know that, um, um, yet another source to, to kind of cover this is that we were an anticipated project. There is a capital enhancement line in the R F twenty-five budget that you need to decide, we're going to do it every single year. And that you could potentially put, you know, take care of these in that, I'm not suggesting that you're applying new, foreign cap to all. But you might say that, uh, you can use one or more of these pieces and, and set a certain amount of lines for that. These are the things that we're wrestling with at the moment, and I want to put them on your radar, and I'm not asking for any sort of, really do our best to handle the stuff if we go. Um, and, but there will be a few to be, not that I, I don't want to be the first time to hear about it, but we suggest the one. The installation, the, the kitchen equipment. Wouldn't that have been part of the inspiration for the old fishing equipment, we tend to do root of all? If it were that simple.
If I was.
Uh, when you start getting into the kitchen equipment, um, you know, we got a situation in another school recently where we, we launched it for a thirty thousand dollar piece of equipment. And because of the requirements, it also went to the, uh, to the electric panel to be a lot of thirty thousand dollars, was not ten thousand dollars, you know? So it's, it gets into, to install hundred twenty-five thousand dollars of my kitchen equipment is a different. Hundred twenty-five thousand dollars in my kitchen equipment is a different plan than moving over the old equipment for a while. Um, so that's, you know, that's, that's the best that we're seeing.
How much should be a lot for labor for the movement of. Bridge. Would be a much.
Yeah.
Obviously. Now, but.
Right.
You know. That total, can that go quarters this potential seventy-five thousand? That. We're gonna have to spend if we choose to do this.
Mm hmm.
But.
That's the kind of question that we would ask when we brought up any plan for what we want to do. But I don't think it would have been. Much of that. The um. There is, I might throw another thing that, um, that's sort of different scenario, not only related to the direction related to what we're talking about. But it's another piece of this sort of. Uh, this. Yeah, but. You should. This is another funding source, it's a less than funding sources for somebody, so go ahead.
Okay, so Doug Hill's bill is likely gonna be. A lot more significant than the grand scheme things when we get. Get through the whole process, right? And eventually using our contingencies for that.
Stop us, we have two components, we can make use of that.
Okay, um.
Yeah.
Uh, so I'm just curious. Is there a cap on how much we would be? Putting out there to Doug's sale, is there like, are they billing on a monthly basis so that we're kind of seeing what that's generally looking like, even before, and what that round's gonna be?
They are billing, yeah. The original budget was for about sixty-five thousand dollars for both the years, and it's likely we want like a hundred and thirty plus. A lot of that goes into the fact that.
A hundred and thirty.
Thousand dollars.
I'm two.
No, sixty-five thousand.
I'm sorry.
The additional work is mostly focused around their involvement in the design of the process. And you know, the, um, managing optimum. With potentially more challenging remains, but there's no. Um, it has been a lot of negotiations with optimal over cost for this. I felt, I think there's at least. One item. There've been many things that they've negotiated, one of them is a six hundred thousand dollars. Um, there is no doubt in my mind, they, they will pay for themselves fifteen or twenty or thirty times for this, for this project.
How much have we seen them so far, just to carry on to.
I pulled up, but I'm, I'm guessing it's in it. Right now, they seem to be billing for the last six months at about six thousand one. So it's not even a two thousand.
And this was probably the harder part of the, their job was this initial phase. So you know where I'm going with that?
And we can say.
Well, is it potential, is there potential that it's going to decrease as we get further into the project? And so we don't see a six thousand dollar bill, maybe we see a four thousand dollar bill each month. The same?
Yes.
I wonder.
They, I mean, obviously we're, we did have conversations with. We've really tried to manage every single nickel on this to make it lower. What I'm observing is the money that's saving, the money we're spending that's saving us the most money is when we hired Doug Hill to negotiate directly with Optimum to keep these Optimums millions down.
But you know how hard it is for me to focus on, on that when we have a hundred and twenty-five thousand in kitchen equipment, seventy-five thousand potentially in labor. A generator that we're more than likely gonna need. Intercon system, which we've been talking about forever, right? We've got all these things that, that are gonna cost us additional money. And then we're talking about them. Being double what they originally were, which I totally appreciate what they're doing. Great, keep that up. But I think it's something that we need to keep track of, cause that is savings potentially, if it's not six thousand, it's four thousand each month as we do this project, so.
Yes, all of that is also a factor in what we're making sure of.
Correct.
But, but they are. Two different things, even though we're quite imploding them.
Yeah.
So another source of funding that, um, I've been thinking about quite a while and they'll try to, you know, um. Discuss that we're going to solve, it's been a chance. You know, cash management of the six and a half million dollars. As I said, we're on six point four two billion dollars, and it sits in that. And we spent seven hundred of it, and. You know, seven hundred on the bottom of it. Uh, you know, since it was made of gold. And it's very. Half percent like this in the fashion. It's a, it's just not the way to manage cash or account. And the, uh, kitchen could have been paid for, um. Already by the interest of the. Um, so what I asked the board, that I. First, a couple options, I probably put, um, our interest on that money. And, um, whatever. And they said that's just not, it's not just blocking out our C D, it's my marketing talent, I'm looking for it here, and we, we keep it more liquid for us, because we don't know exactly what happened. Um, but it's a little bit, um, this thing is hilarious. Money sits in the town check. I would like, what, what I can suggest that the school committee authorizes me to is to speak with your Christian town treasurer. About speaking with the bank together, about how we're getting interest on that money. What are the risks of that? The risks that, when I, when I first started talking to the bank, asked them how to subject a deposit, I said like this, no, it's, uh, the money, the money that now we have to pay a bill. Well, we, say we just take one million, uh, lock it up, or sort of personally need it, right? I'll go finish it early or, then we're kind of stuck, and that's when the bank arrived, said, don't lock it up, put it in the money market, found you're only one, right? And, uh, and I said, well, we, that's the school committee. If they would like to pursue the conversation, because I don't. I manage your budgets and things like that, but I don't get involved with your interest rate, because you know, it's the talent and it's the best. What are, what risk the money market accounts?
You would find that information out.
Yes. I think that's part of the conversation I'd like to have with the bank along with the, um. You know, that I personally don't think there are maybe super risked way. Not earning money on the capital, you know? Um, because it's pretty, I mean, first, there are laws around what risks the municipality can take with this money. And the first is, well, where it goes. And if you have to be the most conservative, um, you know, sort of like investment situations. You can't put this for money, any passing that difference. Yes. And of course, you'd be, you know, couldn't allow us to do that. And, um, you can't actively do that. So they're being very conservative, but they might earn. You know, guessing right now, these times is a little bit annoying, I know, they burn four percent. If you put a ninety dollar away for the year, nine four, four percent, and you thought they'd lock it freezer. Okay, I understand, right? So that's the conversation I think this time, I mean, to before, we've got two months to buy the way on. You know, they can.
Yeah, and, and well, uh, we tabled this. At our last month, and so there was a motion, so and, and they were, we, I would need a motion.
You wouldn't need a motion.
That's what my understanding is, so, and, and just to be clear, it's, it's for you to begin the conversation, right?
Right, right.
Yeah.
Are you sure?
Uh, I'll.
Um. I can always send this to you, you know, um, if necessary, but I'm curious, um, on the fundraising side of things, what we. How that's been going, and then also what we have in our capital enhancement funds.
That's, uh, funny. And my next, I don't, you know, if we look on this. Yeah, but before. The, um, the other piece that we asked about, what's, what the actual balance is in the capital reserve. Um, I'll, I will have to. Gotcha.
Thank you.
And there's, um, you know, there's, you know, that's the, you know. Um, so on the, um, fundraising side, we got Catholic temple, and someone had our, a sort of event. Um, in August, we collected a handful of, um, extracted films. And presented to them. A land of, of, essentially, um, it's broken into three parts. It was what looked due to the, uh, interior. Building, that we, that, you know, I'm going to add to what was already in the, uh, these. And we had some very specific ideas and some estimates that we worked out for the challenges and recognize that we worked out that we are, actually showed different change. And we, um, and some of these were very visible, others were, um, you know, like a new audio vision system that we had in the community space. And, uh, we also, um. Identified exterior, I think, shop grades that we've done. Um, and one of the big ones there was the, um, including a, a sort of a. Using the architect of the park with about around the community center, so. And shift some of the, um, part of the area to over to the other side of the building. And this is, this is the exterior of the place. It also included, um, making the, uh. Pretty little bit more relation to the new sprung part of the water here, and goes down to the conservation land behind here. Um, accessible. Which are acceptable and do, um, and to tie that trail and to really make the school a noticeable. Trailhead and park with upside. Um, so that the community center felt like they can work with both the community center upside and inside. And then we also introduced the concept that it didn't, um. You know, kind of coming up from the work that Kelly's been doing, and where Jen's been doing, the work that's been going on, and the, and the partnerships that we've been committed. That our, um, development committee found to be very important, and that was the development of a Bristol centric curriculum. Um, that was focused on everything in the community. And the, um, in its ecological environment around it, the, uh, the town. And to, you know, build curriculum. Based on the relationships that the school has with Garland Learning Center and, uh, Information. Uh, excuse me, um. Your orders mentor. And, and other things like that. These are the same things that, you know, we can go for years, the school, the tariff has implemented into the summer programs and elsewhere. And that, um, but we would, we were seeking some, uh. Some fundraising efforts, you know, some donations and, and fundraising effort. To allow us to further systematize things and, uh, and to develop them. And in your, um. We call these things, you get your dry, your folder, your packets. It's the, uh, it's the packet, uh, the paper and the concept paper. So when we met with donors in the weeks following the, um, August. That, so that's in the discipline. Um, we have, we identified that there is one high capacity development. Very effective. And, um, the development of the outdoor park. Uh, he expressed some, he's got a working away, uh, landscape and landscaping parks, um. Add considerably to the ability of the building to be utilized by people and to enhance the education experience of people who's going. Very excited about this, and has, uh. And has. Asked that. We wait until in the spring and sit down with him and, and make a plan for how we can have a significant contribution to that. And, uh, based on what we know about activity, it's, be able to be. Just call it, uh, leadership for that piece of, uh. And, uh, it's also ideal that we wait on that. Um, because there's, from what I understand, there's an effort, um, in this community, it's supported by the historic society to do a real similar thing to the park. And member of our, um, fundraising committee, John, pretty Bobby Ice, um, who went us to sit down. So about to, um, advance, you know, some sort of opportunity, we try to sort of, I. I'm not be right now, but even looking at it, and say, you know. You look at number five, you know, we're looking at some, you know, we're looking at. You got it, the building's hard. Maybe you're looking at the same one, let's, we all, let's together. Develop, um, you know, some outdoor spaces, that's what surrounds this pool, we've got a, so. Uh, so we've made some good focus on this, on that piece. Um, we have also. Identified how we could best utilize, um, some of the fund, funding that we've received on the existing building. Um, I think Optimum is challenged to be able to do everything that they thought they could in the improvements that we'd like to make. They, um, they feel, I treat that, or if not that they feel, it is obvious to those of us working on the project that they're. Working the fires, but we're just, we, we know we are not, even though in the spring, giving us all kinds of ideas and drawings and things like that, I think is out of their reach at this time. Uh, however, the new windows that we were looking at for the front of the community space. And the audio video system that we believe that's fixed, I think is that we would like to use. Still, we have to give this price on that, we need to set. Uh, but we have a seventy-five thousand dollar plan for the, uh, your visual system, seeing that they're not very good in the, uh, community space, that we would happily see this one. Um, but aside from that, um, the, some of the, the ideas of redesigning the doorway, and letting the group place up and including the, um. Material enhancement, and the, and the line, what we can work now. And the energy, the, the time, the direction, and we fund it. To that park and the curriculum. Curriculum, we made significant progress in working with a team of donors, um, that are currently reviewing our plans. Currently speaking to each other. And we made a request, um, at the public event that we had, for the. Um, the private, you know, somebody held a private, uh, party for donors. And, uh, but we publicly stated at that meeting that, uh, we would like to raise two hundred thousand dollars for the development of curriculum. And the, uh, one individual stepped forward and said, I would like to work on that with you, and I'd love to have a couple partners that work with me, and we have a lot in those pockets. And there are now really, um, donors that are working together. And they turned it, uh. All on the same page. And it is our hope and, and, uh, that we'll be able to come to an agreement with the government, so add, to be able to have that, my, complete funding. And the team that you see in the concept paper that's working on. On projects, uh, as long as it is developed. And there's a lot of down there, and there's a lot of work getting done. And, um. And I'm very optimistic that that will be, uh, it's whole. It all ties together directly with the, um, exterior space of the school and the park with the conservation field and making all these things. Um, kind of sizing them. In a, in a Bristol centric curriculum that where the, that conservation, that is right up here is actually, uh, the. And, uh, if you will. But there's a lot of pieces to that, and there's a lot of work happening in that. In addition, uh, my colleague Wendy Bass has identified, I have a whole sort of matrix of. Funding sources. Uh, that would be that we are ready to begin writing grants. Jen has met with Wendy. Um, one thing Wendy's waiting for right now, and we have got two so far, is that there is some specifics from the teachers. That, uh, Jen, that I can give back to Wendy to sort of introduce some new grants. And we're also kind of wanting to make a little bit of advanced progress on that curriculum initiative, so that can tie into the language of somebody's. And, uh, but also give our very specific partners. That we can call it, not all, many of the grants, there are grants that, for example, that we can write in collaboration with coastal rivers. And they said that they, you know, we actually do it, so we now need to meet with them and actually sit down and propose grants to them. Um, there's also community law grants that, that I think we should talk with, I'm talking to. And, uh, there were other grants that, that, um, makes sense for the town to engage in conversation about how we would pursue these things, because. What my hat does in, um, as you look at the path, maybe for how this will all. Enhance the surrounding area of the school is that. It's, um, it's a partnership between the town, with the, uh. Coastal rivers, the school, and potentially others. And to engage those partners in some grant writing is the current, we're at now. I think, um, Wendy and I, you know, met, um, or, you know, we created quickly. For last, when we last met, we, uh, decided the next step was to sit down with Jen and really filter through some of the content that we all need. And then, um. And then again, you're already, school committee, we've been, we've been saying, we really want to do that now. But again, it is a, this is a policy, that's a partner, so I know you're ahead of the school committee being aware of, uh, now on, get his partners. So that's where we're at for now. We are still focused. On the leadership level of this. Using this, and we say, we can access the fifty thousand dollars. And we have a lot of, so the handful that is being consumed right now. And we want to sort of settle a little before we reach out to what's there, that we could provide them. Uh, though we haven't seen, um, a handful of us, because that was a twenty thousand dollars. Um, in the. on in the, um, in the work that we've been doing for the, um, the, the, oh, this, uh, the, uh, kind of asking those of what they want to see happen. So that's, you know, sort of where we are right now. Uh, the work continues, you know, in the manner that I've, you know, laid out. And, um, but that's where we are today. And there is, yeah, there were, if you keep, if I keep bubble up for, uh, Peter, but, uh, nothing to do with this.
So, uh, this is a very busy time of year, but we're giggling saying, yeah, I can fix it. Um, there's a ton going on, um, in addition to where they start Monday, they started a full week off. Just, well, they still think it's the wrong time of day and whatnot. It's gonna start it a lot, but that's inside. So, um, winter sports is up and running, going strong. We have two basketball teams. Um, we have some of South District and Boys playing on one of my teams. Uh, and one girls' team, uh, was finally adjusted to that, so we're recruiting, boys being pretty tough. Figuring about it keeps it exciting, um, makes me happy. I can have acting and pop from at least this week. Parent teacher conferences took place in mid-November. We're supposed to go home this Friday, um, before I'm up there officially with last week. So we're in the throes of just drafting stuff like that first third of the year, which is a little on mine that we're already there. The, uh, music and art celebration meal, I should call you and remind you to come because it was passing through the soul, you know, Bill's musical program. But it was last night. It was very, very cool to have, um, for the first one of four years, no, I think, a pre-K to eighth concert, a band event, plural events at the middle level, pre-K to five kids all thing. It was kind of cool to finally be in that place. Um, Caitlin McCullough, our new music teacher, did fabulous job. Kudos for her on her first episode concert. Um, she has another one Thursday night at Crystal. It'll be her second one, at least, on her first, but, um, she would barely take a breath. And, um, Liz, it was well offended. I mean, I mean, Nicole says here, it's like, how many chairs, how many chairs have we come to have an event? And I'm like, I don't know. It's, uh, right about twenty minutes before. So here's the other rack in case we need them. Sure enough, you have to, people keep lying on. So, uh, the band piece was wonderful. I got a little nervous. I don't know that if you looked at the program, there were five or six songs listed and that for the one band and the other band had two and then this kept reverbering. Then I remembered the beginning band book, a song, one line and probably seven notes and three racks, right? It was wonderful because, um, Liz was magical at knowing just the amount to ask the kids to do with only October, November practices, um, by the time they actually instrumented. So, and most of them never picked up an instrument for this year because we didn't have band for quite a while. So, um, they sounded great. They weren't asked to do enough that was overwhelming or that the audience would So that was great. It was about an hour and ten minutes, just right. Um, definitely, I'm very excited. So, uh, just, it, it just finally we're gonna have, I'm like fingers crossed, I don't wanna do this. So, and I, I think I heard a lot of people making comments, walking out and going to come and leave, making the kids on the microphone in the audience. And, oh, I don't wanna do that next year. So you could hear these, uh, fourth, fifth graders really sounded excited. So, um, but we're on the right path. Um, eighth graders are definitely feeling it. It's, it's their last year here and they see the transition coming. They went to, they were invited to an evening thing with Lincoln with families, but then they went yesterday, right, yesterday to visit, um, with, you know, to go to pro theater, hear about the program and get a tour and do, and literally they come back and they can kind of, they're a little battle, you know? It's like, oh, the trip almost over. So, um, it, it's exciting to watch that transition with them and we're learning about programming for those kids. Um, in general, we've got our NTSS team up and running really well this year. Our processes are more streamlined and I feel like we're being much more effective in identifying student needs and applying interventions or even identifying them and hoping to have enough resources and people are doing well. Um, thanks to participate for being the lead NTSS person. I'd like having the help and the expertise. Thank you. Um, continuing to work with ways to help with student relationships and communication skills and problem solving. I call that student resilience. We have partner class activities going on and student buddy groups and we formed a staff, um, recognition spirit committee to address school culture and keeping people feeling, you know, connected and giving them opportunities to interact and then same thing to kids. And then Dove Taylor and Honorable, Peter was sharing, we've had school, community stewardship and place-based, place-based learning as a focus. You know, we talked a lot about last year, the staff and so, um, continuing to have those different activities that aren't necessarily systematized, but doing well does the thing. Our educator in residence from Kiev is part of that. Carolyn Green started this week, um, working with our kids. We know her, she knows us and she's got a schedule that's starting to really flush out, which is great. Our sixth graders are going Friday to the Gulf of Maine Marine, um, program in Portland for what they call lab venture. We put up that trip. They send a bus, they bus the kids. Their, their grants fund all that. So, um, a great experience for them. And then, uh, uh, annual fundraiser is coming back, a fun somewhere. So the, um, students will be bringing in points and dollars as, as they're motivated to, to compete with other classes. And the two organizations we traditionally fund are parent for kids and the new helping group. And we, we typically raise just over a thousand dollars and I know we've written checks to go through, even around five or more. So I'm excited for that and, yeah, for the kids to be participating in something that has a good product. So, uh, let me jump to just TV first. We've had our early release today when we talk about strategic, um, the strategic planning business pieces. We'll see those charts behind you and over here. That was part of the staff brainstorm. So today we used that kind of discussing, um, that process and some of the options that were put forth, um, and some that we came up with as ideas to think about. We'll stay that way about, um. So in addition to that, um, a calendar change item I put on here. We've been asked by the town, uh, there's a few to go, or so they've asked for the building two more times this year. Um, one would be on March fifth and that's a Tuesday and then Tuesday, June eleventh for the presidential state climate. So clearly when they want to use the building for voting, they take the gym, they'll need to close down the store for the students and the owners for that purpose. But I wanted to bring that to your attention because I don't want to make the school calendar, say we can have the board. Yeah. So June eleventh, we weren't going to be in the school. We have our last day on June seventh and that was the hard stop and it's definitely remote days for storm days when we can. Um, so that will affect students on June eleventh. Um, but the March fifth day, um, would then have to be moved to remote data accommodate the town using this location for voting. So they typically let us know earlier, but this is, I, we just found out in November.
Yeah.
So I, I looked at there, I mentioned it to Darren a while ago, but I don't get to make the school calendar, but, you know, clearly I wanted the reports to be aware of that. Yeah. Like, I don't know that the town can change the March one at this time because they have, they write it down with a certain number of months that they can't change the location. I think they're within ninety, they might be close to their ninety day mark or, uh, I, yes. Okay, you know, because Jefferson has similar problems. So we're, we, we could say no, but that's your problem, not mine, but. So it can obviously impact on kid learning. Remote days are, are not optimal, but it's a planned one, which allows you to at least send them home with what they need to do the day from.
And I'm going to listen to the, 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 the.
Those towns sure have their guys. No, go for it, go to Old Town.
We left from the best school.
Without Bristol Town Hall.
Oh, I'm sorry. We voted early, I, I.
Now, many of the towns around here, we still do, like, kind of, we're allowed, I, I think that we, the state rules don't require you to have a room as big as the gym. It's just the courtesy of the voters to have access. It's about being able to manage buses, parents, access and then block off the building to secure health with here.
Oh, it makes sense. Why we would have to do that? I'm just curious. Why, why are we always gonna, oh, what do you get off?
I don't think it's, I mean, definitely parking, it's definitely one of the, it's like, I don't know. Like, the only thing is that they should make it after we let them do this, they should, we need to understand why this addition is so important.
It's a part of the, of the, of the.
But that's my understanding, you know, we, we need a, we need a look and.
I don't know that, I just need you folks to say, I'm gonna let them know you don't think it's possible then. That's up to you, hon.
Yeah, I, the.
I know, I, I know Rachel, I went to Rachel, I said, does anyone, and she would say she's looked at everything. I don't believe that she does. Now she's like, you know, the Willie workers hall and, you know, we're strapped on buildings, other sides.
The wording is that we'll have another calendar change and. So that's, that's all I got for more people than before.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Any other questions?
Uh, the only thing we're working on is some current heating issues in the building. Probably, uh, so, uh, so we are engaged in working on that right now.
The room, the rooms. Still the same back distance from each other in these tables, even as you're in that. I feel the heat in here, I would felt in there.
This isn't the room that we're most concerned about.
Always like a feeling, she's.
You know, positive.
That's called with the union.
Like a good day for a conference.
John, he's like, Carol. Leave that, leave it, yeah. We will leave, oh, building the simple, um, alright. Hold this.
Easy a joke, you kind of like.
Okay, so, uh, oh, what business, sorry.
All business, yes, sir. All business, any all business?
New business. There you go. New business. It is now, as of this morning, budget season, but and, um, I'd like to, you know, sort of, um, introduce you to budget season, the quick forecast of what I know now. And, um, and some things that can be tossed around in the, uh, in the committee's lines over the next two months as we prepare for the January meeting, which I will, uh, bring you if, for everybody for you review and so we can go through it, cost center by cost center and then by, um, you know, how the school committee would like us to, whether we work on it before we cap one, if it ever need. So we have three meetings and, and this, and in this one, I just want to give you forecasts of some things that are important to understand at the beginning of the, of the cycle. Um, there is a, uh, your funded balance forward will be six fifty, as it was last year. It was, yeah, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's our funding audit general discussion. We had five hundred thousand dollars, uh, you know, fund dollars forward in this current year's budget. And the, um, you know, my, um, financial reports can be, of two periods, indicating going on seven, two thousand dollars left. Um, which means the fund down for the three hundred and fifty less, which tells you, you're in fact, you're actual expense, I do, but certainly we have, we, and it will tax impact. We come back to that. Salary and benefits, um, uh, by the contractual increases are estimated and maybe estimated, um, to increase by ninety thousand dollars. Health insurance is estimated to increase by thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, your secondary, um, tuition bill is likely to increase by about sixty-five thousand dollars. And, um, your facilities, we talked about, is there some more money in there that, you know, that we know? I'm gonna say that, you know, kind of, you know, rock foundation, but the number I want to give you here is say you choose to spend two hundred thousand dollars on facilities, covering that ten year, which is what the town has said, you know, it should be paid for, uh, we should live on, we're living in my group, we need to pay in a day grid. And it would be, um, office, it would be, it would be paid through the school budget, by state statute. So if you were to do that and have that forty-four thousand dollars worth of, uh, savings, possibly add a two hundred thousand dollars, you know, increase on the facilities body. Um, the increased share of the central office with the IT director, so it would increase your assessment by fifty thousand dollars. You can save ten thousand on the, um, software migration that we did this year, that we will get next year. Which would bring your, um, a total expense side increase of four hundred and thirty thousand dollars increases expenses. Like, you have to add that to the fact that you're a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar, uh, loss of, 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 of bounds forward, or whatever you so then the full impact on the tax, or the seven hundred and eighty thousand dollar increase for a, a tax impact, six or quarter percent increase on the budget, which you brought out on the, 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 uh, but in eleven and a half percent tax impact. And which is, uh, something that we want to avoid. Um, so not much we can look for now, so, nothing to use in salaries, health insurance, nothing to do but secondary. Uh, we talked about the facilities, but we have this generator that the community wants. And that is how much can you, you see how the ALS budget was drawn nice. Um, but, you know, this is what we are aiming for. We have not, Jen and I have not been able to fully quantify any savings or increases in costs based on the ending of the regional, uh, programs. So we are currently forecasting that to be budgeted. Uh, you won't be paying money into the other regional programs, but you'll need to, you know, be able to have money to deal with what we can do. And, um, and, you know, so this is, that's what we know right now. I can, so, you know, I have these two numbers, you know, so six and a half and eleven and a half. And our goal is to certainly, you know, not, uh, be higher than that. Uh, and it's going to be a far work, I have to take, I mean, it's, it's possible. So that is the new business. So, um, we'll pick up that conversation with, uh, present, uh, and budget, see how, who am I, you know, sort of, uh, testing for on a January. So, Jen, how do you turn this off?
Yeah.
The, the, the presentation is.
Sure, I'm watching. Long time no see.
I know.
It's one of the, we're full of meetings. It's your normal, but, yeah.
The Apple TV is on, Jen.
I, I just wanted to.
Yeah. There you go.
Alright, so, um, we're gonna take a look, uh, I'm, uh, plenty of time, I'm gonna, you know, kind of talk as quickly as I can, maybe as much as I can, but I'm also being fairly aware of what the process has been really have done to with these for two months. Um, as you all know, April, we begin the process of, you know, whether we're structuring the. Um, as you all know, April, we begin the process of, you know, whether restructuring the many schools districts we are, might be just the benefits for, uh, um, educational benefits, municipal benefits, and operational benefits. And we can work these to do that. Um, and the problem, you know, is real, um. You know, the, when the ALS model was introduced, it was a little bit of a catch off, but it's, you know, you said you don't think we probably want to use. And, uh, but, you know, when the, as the state, public education continues to kind of fix the thing, you say fix them in the RSU, you say, oh, no, this is ALS. ALS is already sort of an organ, you know? And so they have become very, uh, uh, different as the business of public education, but definitely more complex. Um, we've been sort of left behind in these fifteen seats. And it's, um, we'd like to do something about that. Uh, most of the ALSs have been put upon the benefit, put at this standard in one way or another, involved in something else. And there are several that are telling to be filled right now. Uh, one of those were indeed, at the case, was at this point in time, is the weight shortage. And when we have, you know, sort of, a half thousand different employees, employers on the pedestal, kind of competing for labor in the different contracts and things like that. You can only just try to share it out and to be able to follow the CDA's, et cetera. Um, all the buildings in the district are, are aging. And maintenance and construction costs are high, as we know very, very well. And, um, so there is a, you see, you know, part of the problem is we're not really able to, um, use the buildings in the way that would really optimize their use. When every building is used by a particular subset of the school system that's specific to that geographic area. To be able to kind of look at how we can optimize the, uh, facility by restructuring the piece of the effort. And, and, and the environment, the speed of buildings has changed. There's a lot of things introduced that were cost expenses during COVID, you know, the COVID Esther funding is gone, leaving us with USAP and depositions that we have to maintain on our own. And, um, the schools are unable to, to host all of the different educational and athletic programs that they couldn't do. Because they don't have the size of great cohorts to be able to do that. Um, so, and, you know, one of the things that I think that the ALS really needs to understand is that, is, you know, people out there in my job, in Travis' job, in Mrs.'s job. Stay away from the buses. They go to other places, yeah? And in years ahead, you're not all the people from, and we're, we're all we are here. It's like the Chicago's problem. So that when it's time to place these, uh, adjutant graders and principals, I'd say the same thing. It's not a destination for them. And that's just, you know, I love it, I love it. Right, too.
I was gonna say, how long has it been, Jen?
Get me talking right now.
No, I'm just very practical. So, I want to zip through. Um, we worked with Tom and Wilson, we looked at everything upside down, backwards, we talked first, even about transportation situations. We're trying to reach out to many different community stakeholders, people that invite input. And we met with all kinds of people, and we looked at the finance, we didn't sign up. In fact, we had the state model, new DDP seventy nine, so we want some more also, so, and we learned a lot. I've probably learned more in the last six months about pub, uh, public education, or, I said, that six months that I'm having, I've worked it for that. Digging into the details of the legal finance, uh, biology, move one piece, some, some pieces that follow it, have been incredibly enlightening. And one thing we learned was that, you know, so, a half thousand years or so after, um, ALS's work, and that's been nine years, and consolidation happened. The Department of Education introduced another model called the Educational Service Center. And it introduced it, but it wasn't the same idea to convert everybody like it was when RSU became, but it was just put up there and take it, if you have the useful. Uh, it's incredibly profitable, and it comes with a number of benefits. And it is entirely possible that it could replace our whole ALS structure as a new entity that would, um, provide all the same services we provide. It has the legal authority to provide transportation services, food services, special, the services, business services, superintendent services, uh, facility services. Everything that's not instructional, specific, is a service that can be offered by an educational service center. An educational service center, and also operates much like a, um, under the same kind of neutral agreement as the ALS does. With members that govern it, that are board directors, and that, um, you know, decide how, what the rules of engagement are, and what services it will offer. It only has to offer two services, for example, the transportation and food services, you do an educational service center. Um, if, one thing that, and I know that, you know, if we're talking, listen, several years ago, you, you know, every, these communities looked at what an educational service center might provide. And things can be much more, sort of, yeah, services, volume, and all that. But one of the things that, um, the only one we dug in, or people, was that it also comes with a incentive to participate. It comes with a ninety five dollar per student, um, subsidy from the state, which is about a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year. For, for the central kind of school system that would be given to the education staff, so. Um, the other thing it comes with is that it pays for half of the, the educational service centers executive director's salary. That is, you know, dividing the full set of services that we have to supervise. But we pay for half this, put on salary. Um, the other thing it comes with is operational foot in the class. And we spent very specific with this with the D O E, and said, okay, so let's say they're just providing those services, you know, what would you give us? And they said, well, we must have a big enterprise accounting system. Yes, we did, we do, and we just paid by seventy thousand dollars. They said, what would I have? Oh, yeah, what's your thought? Well, we give the educational service center seventy thousand dollars to pay for it from the other ALS. And so when we add all this up, we would have received, this year, if we were in E S C, we would have received two hundred and fifty thousand dollars additional from the state. In addition to that, it allows, there's an incredible amount of flexibility in, you know, in the ability of an E S C to model how it interacts with its members. And to, to, to create that, and members have an opportunity to, um, really look at whether or not all members are gonna have the same services. Or whether it, whether some would take some services and others will take others. That would all be in the local grid. And it will also have the ability in the E S C that an ALS did not have to contract for additional work with other, potentially, you know, other districts in name, that we want by coming to serve. Good, we have, you have a large business office, and, you know, our faculty needs, you know, kind of payroll, learn for the K three, you can bill for that. So it creates opportunity for revenues, man. That can help you balance society, the central administration, the cost to, for member towns. We're part of one, well, we're not part of them. We access the service of this, uh, Schuett Scott, the Asian Educational, or that for some, um, specialized services. We pay as non-members for those services, but the members get them as part of the, uh, helping members. This model, this educational service center, may be the biggest thing that comes to mind with the community. Because we think that there's, at this point, we think there's no reason not to do this, and that we're, we're going to try to advance this with all the boys in the K L S more. As a model of better structuring the central. So that is a piece that, uh, we can keep talking about. Um, we are offering you supporting details of what we're, uh, presented earlier in the meetings. Um, and we have a couple proposals here that I'll, I want to review, if you have the opportunity to advance. There's one that's already, uh, been kind of taken off the, uh, the opportunity, because it would have taken all six towns. And Noble Borough shows not to pursue it, which prevents the other towns from being able to pursue it without them. I'm able to first to move on it, but then they mixed it. I'll show you quickly what that was, and get to it, so that you have the opportunity to learn from, have to be thoughtful of it. Because your second, your other choices, your system information, and that you could consider. But there needs to be, move forward on anything by a little bit of intent. That says, we intend to disrestructure it, and you think it's gonna look like this, and we just want to let you know, so that you're with us when we do it. And, um, that is something that should, should explore, now, the options, if you, you would want to take it, probably at the January meeting. And decide you want, you want to kind of pursue that. And then form a restructuring committee, that is not just, there is a school committee, but outside, people in the community as well, identify that process, and bring them in, so we can identify the structure. Um, and then we are continuing to work with the ALS, or, you know, the E S C. Let's look at that first option that we were targeting up as, and after looking at all the ways, things to work, how we could optimize the use of the buildings, and, um. And you look at the transportation, there's some geographical, you know, adjacency of, of, uh, people, where the enrollment was. Don't mind what, we thought that the, uh, there existed an option for, have just two administrative units, you know, and so, of course, we're still. One was the job center, which has the critical mass and the facilities, and she brought it, you know, sort of, location, where it was operating, and it is now. And then the other six towns, could have been, could have been reorganized into a single pre-K through twelve district. And, and become an RSU. It wouldn't be the same old kind of RSU that was offered in two thousand nine, because there's so many different, you know, kind of ways that it can be adjusted, run, cost sharing, the governance, and the representation now. You can currently modify that issue, to distinguish it from the, the narrow one that was forced upon people, uh, you know, that could be anything. Um, but it would have used the four buildings, and had, and in such a way that the Noble Borough South Crystal, Crystal Schools, uh, could have chosen to become pre-K through four elementary schools, serving all six towns. So that the, all six towns, you know, we, we had a plan for all those students to attend those three buildings, the pre-K through four, and grade six, grades all day, you'd be a five through eight middle school for all six towns. Um, it would have increased the subsidy of the three, from the six pound by three hundred and thirty five thousand dollars. Um, not, you know, not three hundred and thirty five Nolan, just three hundred and thirty five thousand. Uh, but combined with that E S D, we would have had almost six hundred thousand dollars, which we're operating with. Um, there would have been significant operational efficiency gains, you know it, and we don't, we don't do it. And it would have given a pre-K option for the town. Um, and then bigger co-grade cohort, no buildings would have closed, and all staff would be changed, and it would, it would have been a much more modernized, uh, you know, model. The Newcastle kids would attend Noble Borough for pre-K through four, the three kids would have come here for pre-K through four. Aaron Scott would have been divided, and that sort of one bus group would have come here, and another would go to South Crystal. And South Crystal would stay here, and the six towns would also have this, the, the five, three eight, and grade soft A. Um, and it would add all of that really efficiently with the building sizes and the, the. Um, we would also have the tools to be able to, you know, kind of balance all that by having school choice, you know, kind of, uh, up to a point where it balanced that. It was dependent on a lot of much of the choice of, for the, for, for example, two, but two high schools are important without, popular first one. Where it needs to try, just need to show it, and then to do it for a big, like, mine, you know. Uh, it also was, it also, you know, we thought there existed the opportunity for differentiation programming. So that some of the, uh, uh, P K through four schools were more focused on, I don't know, outdoors, you know, the experiential stuff, and all these were focused on, you know, who we know, kind of, now, and I need skills, and so. Uh, but that would have made people choose things in such a way, and we could also make the, like, the bus routes, compared to make the, um, balancing the buildings perfect. Uh, we had enrollment laws, as you can see, no reason to dwell on them, and the pre-K to project, and no reason to dwell on them. Uh, and this was, you know, five through eight, kind of, would have reduced the population, um, in grade soft A from four hundred, it is now, down to, it's not really three thirty two, because the fourth is three eighty right now, plus twenty tuition fees. Fifty four hundred, you probably still would get the only tuition fees, you'd be at three fifty. But taking a fifty kids out of that school, we're allowed to send them to middle school program, you know, that can happen when you've got more space available to you. Um, we looked, we're saying this forecasting the operation of each town to grow over the next twenty years. And, uh, and, you know, kind of like, you can, I, I just had a long time talking about this, but you know what, I think is accurate about this, and what I think is fantastic about this, always move on. Um, there are, a number of student benefits that happen when you work with a, a larger group, right? And these are benefits that we take with close look at, because your second choice here would definitely be all much the same. You have larger groups of students providing an opportunity to offer more, I don't know, you have more R B's, you have more cheese, you know, there, there's, uh, you know, so you already have a, you know, sort of, I can't remember which, you said, oh, we already have a, always passing people. Yeah, but you don't have the girls, but, you know, that's. So there's a lot of things that you might not even realize now that you don't have, that you might, if you had a additional public, to, 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 to offer. And then just the basic standard friendship opportunities, when kids have more kids with them in grade, and they, they age group, they're the birthday partners. I don't know, it's a long time to come down to, I mean, those larger cohorts, you're building, this is what I'm posting open is. Uh, you're building, uh, team, you work on team building and, and futureing skills, uh, being able to focus on what you're, what you're, you know, um. And. The governance would, no reason to dwell on that district. But there's a lot of different balance models out there that allow for, um, different kinds of representation that, that, uh, is weighted. And there's so much work on balance of the kind of domain, get to do on things in your life, if you knew that really, you know, incredible amount of flexibility now than you didn't have when you first worked. Uh, and the, uh, like, for imitation of an RSU is, not every town needs the same number of seats, and there's many different ways you can decide how many seats a town gets. And the cost sharing formulas allow for, we're putting everything under the sun, like, just making a deal. You know, traditionally, it's been based on, um, an equalized no rate, a people count. But you can shift those things back and forth until you find a pretty good answer, and if you don't find a good answer, you can start twisting a little bit more. There's, um, these people, uh, cost limits, say that we're gonna use people, we're gonna build a formula on people count. Well, we don't want to get too out of whack if, if, if things are, are working in a, we want it to. Or you can do it by no rate, and, again, we don't want to get too out of whack if it's not working for everybody. Uh, you know, benefits, so there's limits on the limits that these things can impact things. There's some events that you can basically, you know, you can agree to redistribute the, uh, the, what the state gives you on D D two seventy nine, in a way that's not exactly what it says on the D D two seventy nine D H P. And, and it's certainly a political, a single town may make a contribution to the school district larger than required by the cost of. That's very mutual language, just put in there intentionally, you know, the regulation. But what it means is that a town can say, we want to do more. We want, and we're willing to pay. And if the town wants to do that, the town could, we want to be able to do it out of whack, they could say, actually, you can make these things, if they can, you know, fund that. And that's certainly the system, you know, but, you know, there's precedent for that, um. So, we've, we're, that, that option is not available for the six towns, but all the lessons learned are important, as you consider door number two. Door number two, uh, we've restored to four school administrative committees, we have, we have nine right now, with, um. And, uh, in this one, Jefferson and Noble Borough would continue to offer it as independent districts. And they departed, didn't have a membership in that, the, uh, educational service center. Grade soft A, um, is right now is, has finally noticed an intent that it would like to, um, bring in its three secondary school committees, three New Castle, and Newcastle, and their own committees, because nine through five. They're all gonna fold together, instead of being a P K through eight C S D, with a new P K through twelve. That eliminates the new budgets, the local entitlement grants, that goes a long way to gaining some efficiency. Um, and we expect them to sell first. It could be, if people, first, my South Crystal, so choose, reorganize into a single people, twelve first year. Uh, under that same, and modify it on the machine, it's a two form, we sit down and negotiate the best, you know, what's the best interest of everybody. Uh, we named Keith Howard, John Day, Justin Farrow, who doesn't, out there, you know, yeah, um, and, and, uh, that would be an honor to do. And, um, without, without, if, you know, you have, it's not the RSU that offered two thousand nine, since you're gonna divide, minus, when you're gonna, of people, she did, there's an, go here, it's so much for that. Good question. People could dwell. You don't, yeah, well, I think, well, we have Lincoln Academy, I was up there, directly responsible for the education industry. If, let me make policy decisions around whether or not they're allowed to go to, you know, you, you have a lot of, um, overs, overs. We just not educating, we just don't have the, but you raise the dollars in your budget, and you authorize us to handle, to operate as we want. There are some definite benefits, um, we see, otherwise we would be getting a few, if they're in with South Crystal. You know, certainly the operational efficiency gains. Um, in how much work it takes to manage, uh, manage to, is independently, that can be managed to better. Um, and how much work it takes to manage to ease independently that can be managed to better. Uh, and most towns here stayed same without change, that's for the whole simple, I mean, but you guys will be changing. And it just, and what can be addressed is a involvement with South Bristol, they have fifty-eight students in the building right now, it's 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 around fifty-one next year. And um, and in my understanding is of the, you know, I've been, only thirty-nine of the students in their building next year actually are South Bristol residents. They've opened enrollment and welcome students from other towns, um, to get to the size they are. But they, but it's um, it's not, potentially, it's it's not, I I mean, I have no judgment on it. It may not be the best way to use the building, that's all I'm saying, but that's not the people in South Bristol. Um, so that's what we have a track there. The um, we did bring the same presentation to South Bristol last night, your chair is here. Um, and and they entertain the same thoughts that we're having tonight. The opportunity is to, for this school committee is to decide whether or not it is intercatering. And exploring the relationship with South Bristol that will unite and offer um, the opportunity to join into a new structure together. And there certainly seems to be a lot of post-its in the room. Jen has been a uh, strong and very force as we look at one of our potential benefits of the education for the students side. And she's going to speak for the team and what would you like to add to this very sort of.
So as some of you know, I mean, when the information more specifically came from central office and Lindsay helped people like that to go forward, I remember when that came out. People started to say, oh, how is that, what could this mean, what does this, how is this going to possibly impact that? So, you know, I got talking to Lindsay and Peter and said, I need to engage the staff and I want them to feel like, like they can ask questions and we can figure that out. And of course, we have meetings at the admin level. So when I looked at um, the two options that were here, I basically said, how do I put these on charts for the staff to go voice the. What do they think will be beneficial to the kids, what do they think won't be helpful to kids with the option, you know, what's a benefit, what's a drawback to doing it the way that's um, different than that? And then um, how does that in fact, impact staffing or other resources? So I wanted to focus on the kid impact first, and then these charts have the bottom two boxes are a benefit and drawback to either staffing. Staff members that only, you know, for instance, the staff member saying, I want to work at first school, not at another school, they would then come and draw back. But most of these things that we probably have heard in other schools, I'm not sure if I have a thing, and Peter have been a lot of, I'm sure I'll avoid some, no, no. Um, so we did that exercise today. What I did is I gave them um, a chart around, even though the middle school option is already not going to be feasible. Other towns, for example, said, no, I still wanted them to fill that chart out because um, we all know that there are benefits to kids. For having a bigger middle school population and changing things up after being in the building for seven years. So I wanted to see what people would still say, if we can look at those benefits of doing this and say, if this isn't gonna happen, what can we do instead? How can we address that need differently if we're not there? So I made them do that activity. So the two charts behind Peter are the middle school option, the next one, I worded it a little broadly, I just said B C S and South Bristol School Joint School District. I didn't call it an RSU, I didn't, I just said if we were to combine, because as if I'm saying this correctly here. If you agree for an intent to pursue something that it isn't defined yet, pursuing it is figuring out what benefits could happen and what options you have and then. You know, and then defining it with your stakeholder group, so I didn't want it to be too, I wanted people to be open minded to what would be sound. So the two charts behind Peter and Jess kind of give, did staff worked in groups of four and I gave them five minutes of chart and we rotated around the room. So they did that one, the middle school option, the second one with the joint school district. And then I kind of capitalized on that E S C idea or that collaborator, the cooperative idea. And I said, so we already cooperate often as needed around sports. You know, we don't look, we have formal agreement on with A Ds around the district about sharing kids, but we don't have a formal agreement with South Bristol about sports and maybe we could. So I rather they call it, I don't understand E S C is the way Peter and Lindsay have loaned, so I called it cooperative with them. So I have a chart about what could happen if music theater and arts were in a cooperative with our closest neighbor school. Same four boxes, um, what about alternative ed type offerings, not knowing where that's headed in the future for two schools? I did one with special education because clearly we've had regional programs which could be, which are cooperative of some sort. What would happen if we decided to work with South Bristol since the programs are going back to our home schools possibly can be sounded officially? And then sports and extracurricular activities and then the last one, you know, what about enrichment and um, G T options? Because we, even in the past, when a teacher at G S B zoomed in one of our eighth graders, she did algebra through her and she part-time worked there. And we've done creative solutions to meet the needs of our kids. So those were the charts and then the one on the far right, we, I just gave them a general. What are some other structures that may enhance educational programming for our students by collaborating with other realized towns? And just very generally, what, give other thoughts, know that we've done this activity. Interestingly, um, after school programming came up from a lot of post-its, like what can we do for kids? Because, you know, we really have the why, home is if the law is going to protect us. Um, so, you know, there there is no easy way to capture because there's different charts. I don't know if people want to take a quick look at the, or want me to give off some quick highlights from the one about a joint school district for Bristol and South Bristol. You know, I, and I can go grab a few quick, because I, my head's full of all the things we talked about and all the, I was in one group and Chris Abate was in a different group for most of that work, so.
But I have some highlights, it'd be helpful.
Yes.
In the end, it'd be nice to, I I would.
But but I think, what's, what I think is important for this process today is that the staff know that. If you're going to make a decision about pursuing something or saying we're doing nothing, you know, either way that you have a quick sense of what they were thinking. I will say overarching comments I got today, they had a ton of questions about really understanding what this means. So like they're, you know, and I said, I think really it's about permission to pursue and focus on. Nothing that's cited at a board meeting at any of our towns this month is going to say you are officially doing something other than if you're setting up everything and doing, we're bringing, doing nothing there. Um, does that sound accurate, you know?
Yes.
I think it does, it's both properties of them. Um, so the big thing with the regionalization that people said, just big picture, larger curriculum opportunities, giving kids um, more choice, more peer interaction. Some of our classes are smaller, that that increase small, both kids for years, where they just can do the folks and feel with us. Um, different programming, certainly after school, art, music, B E years or all that stuff could be offered, bringing out a larger group of kids. And finding to have similar people way better and easier if you have more players, more professionals working with that audience. So that was a big one, and then um, drawbacks are just, people had a lot of class size concerns and so if you go either way, if you had enough kids in a regional school. You're gonna have okay class sizes, you have more groups of that grade, but then it is just, I think when we talked about the staff first call option here and even here. They were worried that, well, we just bring a business school came over classes, I was like, well, no, there's twenty-six kids, we're gonna have two classes, you know, that's gonna not work. Um, so the middle school option had that clearly drawback, block of economy, um, people having to work in the building, not knowing where you're assigned, all those kinds of things. Um, but then the benefits, certainly special utilization and departments and having a staff to go through with, that a lot of our staff work in little silos. There there are part-time music only in one building and then no one else could talk to you, that makes that, so that would be why they're being the only math teacher five days, nobody else could kind of say, how is this curriculum working? Unless you get together with other school, then what they are active using the same material. Um, so that was, it was a rich conversation, people could hon- honor that chart even though they knew it wasn't quite forgiven, you know? Um, the Bristol, South Bristol, similar positives to over here, um, place-based learning could be similar. We have same kind of geography and location, um, we're both on the peninsula, we certainly could combine uh, the curriculum would work well. Special ed courses being combined with this, clearly both our schools could have different kinds of needs and those needs might be very unique. And if you have more of those kids, it just makes the staff collaborate and learn together better, like those are positives. Uh, drawback, fast commuting, um. Let's see, I think they like, um, this one, I think fits into both charts. People like the K have experience where six, seven and eighth graders are working with younger kids. So the idea of one school just being seven and eight in another school, for seven, eight in another school, having younger kids, you can't do the bodies, you can't have that. Using the middle school as younger, so to speak, by having them with younger kids, um, so, because this one's not, people come out and it's different, people. That's what it is.
I know.
And I think so, the big piece I like tried to avoid, um, I can give my little. Position I've been in here with my career for, I don't know, four years and um. And worked at one school for sixteen of them, was a district employee for two years, had kids go to one and then the other, and then I here. So like I used to say, I have this multiple personality, so I I I'm Bristol through and through, but I can see the pros and cons of all of our schools and all of the strength and just. The experiences for kids, so um, it's easy for me to stand in front of the staff and say, it's like, we can, we can make something work. And our board supports us and will listen to us and so I think um, it's a testament to how well they feel supported by you. That you didn't have an army come here to make a paranoid, but some board decision was gonna cause them to do something they don't like. So you know, it's like, we, we had that conversation, they definitely, somebody said, let them know, we know that they, you know, appreciate us and it's. So um, yeah, it's, there's so much more to talk about, but it's not defined yet. So I think people were open to, how do we provide opportunities for our kids and our work, what will theirs look like? But clearly they don't want to be assigned to another town to work, that was clear.
Don't set it right where we are now. The opportunity is, uh, for the Bristol committee is to file an N S of intent or not, to consider restructuring. And the opportunity that the, that the, the central office has suggested and it has boiled down to is to work with South Bristol. And Jen and her team that already, you know, collected a lot of data, that could be part of the thinking like that. Um, so, you know, there is no need to act tonight, I mean, we can pivot this uh, and vote in January, but have the time to think about it. Talk to your neighboring towns, your own townspeople and begin conversations that would uh, lead to a decision. And South Bristol will be making the same decision um, in January about whether or not they would like to uh, explore this with. Sarah was asking.
Yeah, can I just say, I mean, we, we did this whole thing yesterday too, and I think that we kind of, although we haven't made any decisions, we kind of came to the same conclusion that all the other towns are like. We, we like having our own school, I think um, that was kind of one of the things that came out of last night. But I think that there are so many opportunities for us to expand middle school options, you know, we, our fifth and sixth graders or fifth or sixth graders spend a week on which island. You know, every, every other fall, because that's how grades are scheduled, but we have, we have so many things that we really could do together that I think would mix our kids up. And give them different opportunities to kind of achieve some of the, the benefits to being a bigger school there with, but still keeping. Our own unique local schools, so it's, I think it's exciting to kind of look at the ways we can, let me jump, I've talked about it some, but I think there's exciting things there even within kind of the same. Same system we have now.
You're from South Bristol?
Yes, yeah. Yep, that's right, Sarah Mitchell.
Oh, when I first moved here, it was a long time ago now, um. I had made friends with people who did with the the middle school. And the next year they closed it and. The town really doesn't exist anymore as such. And to the extent that you have a town, your town is around your school, so I I know precisely what you're looking for. And, you know, you want to be more than a town hall and a few services and a tax collector. Um, I, I, at the same time, I see all sorts of synergies that could be created between Bristol and South Bristol. And um, there's neat programs that happen in both places and and things like that. So I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm more than willing to, to, to keep looking at it, but I really think that it has to, you know, a lot of it has to be, you know, arrangements between. This particular, I think, because of geographic proximity for us, Bristol and South Bristol.
I think it would consider, yeah, I'd say the town's people's perception of this, there's so many wonderful things about this, but on the other hand, it sounds very scary. And people who don't hear all this information, and I've heard it, you know, multiple times, so I feel like it's someone to handle on the framework of it. I've already heard a few comments, just, you know, wild comments. And uh, that's how people are, and I was wondering about the survey, would I ask Peter maybe, um. Okay, are we not hearing any, um, I was curious what the general public. Take on this is, and of the people that were surveying, how many of them were from, do you know how many were from different counties or do you not?
I think she does it there.
So, she said she did.
I would be interested in him, you know, when it's.
People that want to close our school. That's all it's, people that want to close our school, so it's two million dollars.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know if that's, you remember that time when we did something like that once, many years ago?
We were, we had a strategic meeting at, at eighteen five.
So long.
He's failing to see.
That's smaller scenario, potentially be valuable.
You know, it was the problem, I guess. Or at least have them, at least we under feel like we are um, aware. And I know from working on other families, you can put things out there, years, and then people are like.
Even the conversation today with the thirty people living in the room, the questions, and I know they read stuff, but it doesn't mean the same thing when you read it and you don't. You know, my, what I see in here, because I've done this role for so long, is different than somebody who's only been an ed tech or a classroom teacher and hasn't thought about the other information. So it was harder, it was interesting to how people interpret the, the same information without conversation.
Well, we don't have to make a decision, like, we can, we, we, we can table this until next month, right? And then, that's my understanding, we can get this information. You know, and then, and then, but it sounds, it sounds like.
Sorry, I would, I would, not speaking to Lindsay here, um, I don't think there's any specific time pressure on. If you thought you had to, you wanted to have the result that was in place by a certain day, then we could talk about what we have to do or work backwards. But I think that there's more important questions than what day it starts.
Right.
And the notice of intent to be filed or anything.
The G S B like, well, I get you, I think that you have.
Oh, they didn't, they had the same choice you did, well, they didn't have a choice, they had a choice. And there's nobody to do the work with, because they were already working with two towns and there was no real opportunity to say, well, you could have all the, you know, South Bristol or Bristol kids come in here or something, because you wouldn't, nobody would fit.
And there wasn't like an abbreviated middle school option where G S B, South Bristol or Bristol could come together and do a middle school and have their pre-K or.
It was nothing, it was nothing that I could see and that Lindsay and I could see and and um, and that would utilize the findings in such a way. You know, one of the things that, that we began to kind of like filter out options, you know, um, could we potentially have the, just a middle school with five towns, right? And could we put all the P Ks with four students in between South Bristol and Bristol? It's a long bus ride from the, you know, there's a point down to the road, near the road there in Newcastle, off and around to Dennis Scott and now, you know, yeah.
Speaking to the choir, because that's all around there, us, you know, forty-five minutes, well, summer games, so.
You know, you've all seen, you know, one of the things that is important for me that you saw the option that we took out, how we approached it, is because maybe somebody sees something we understand. Maybe, but, but these are the things we had to analyze to be able to figure out, where do you fit the bodies and how do you get them there in bus? And how does it impact you financially and does it create better? The possible, same possible pieces, but they. I mean, the possible, same possible pieces, but they, they, they are physical, they are, they have, you know, bodies of water between them. They have, you know, dollars attached to them, and we could not figure out a way to make a five-town middle school.
It's really disappointing, I have to say that, uh, having two kids that have come up through school, have a eighth grader now, and a senior in high school. And I think that, you know, having a larger pot of kids, that's not just the fifteen or ten to twenty that's in the mix, um, for, you know, from pre-K all the way up, right? That, that, I think, provides its own set of challenges, because they don't necessarily have a social sort of stepping stone to get used to a larger school. And then they jump into Lincoln Academy, and it's like this big old fishbowl of, um, just, all kinds of things, right? Exactly, and so, I, I think there's, it's a missed opportunity, and I feel like it's important to say that. I also think that, um, we should be working with South Bristol, they're just over there. Um, you know, I, my kids have grown up with many of the South Bristol kids, and, um, there, there absolutely should be more, um, intermingling and collaboration where possible, and, you know, I don't know what that looks like, but I think that if that is the only option, at a minimum, that should be what happens. Finding some way to make that more cohesive, and more valuable as you work through them.
Well, do you think it? Yeah, yeah, think about it, yeah. There you go, that's all. But, uh, thank you to Peter and Karen and Lindsay for, you got her to talk to you about even, coming up with the plans.
That's a lot of good stories.
And that one, and we'll move on to our, there's nothing further, in order of all. So, we have the first read of our, they're in the, they're in the package, drug-free workplace, workplace bullying, you know.
Those are the second reads. Yes.
Drug-free workplace, that's what we had for last.
Yeah, that one's.
Oh, oh, sorry, I'm reading the, sorry. I'm reading this, sorry, again. First read, we have our professional staff development, that's all in the package. Professional staff development opportunities, division and evaluation. Is there, like, our last other policies, kind of, the things we have to do?
No, I mean, these are all required policies, they are exactly as they're printed. Um, if you have any questions about them, I can try and field those. I'm not the policy girl, but I'll give it a try.
We'll read these, we'll read them, so we'll all, we're gonna take a motion, uh, to do our quick read.
Yeah, I'll, I'll.
Okay, good. Amelia's got the second, the session. Uh, in favor of first reading? Great, second read, which is why we had that one, drug-free workplace, right? Workplace bullying, family care leave, entertaining leave, recruiting, hiring. Anyone see anything, uh, there?
Well, I was, like, there's somebody, I'm not something, oh, too, I don't know, I don't know, even some smile, you know? We can wind out between, that could be part of trying to, um, uh.
Partly, yeah, there is an aspect of the, of the.
Well, I'm looking to drive, though, it's in pink, and it's for throwing out, not what, if it was not safe, right, maybe?
Well, I.
I would assume I can sell that in the some.
Because this is a lower, it's kind of a training, um, someone, you know, come out here, if you can, are.
It's for the hour, it's in there.
I have a question without which, uh.
Okay.
Or do you just want to do the one you have a question on, and do the rest? Unless you have questions about the other ones as well.
So, um, we could, we could move, uh, everything except for family care leave.
Uh, okay, I'll make a motion to approve G V E C drug-free workplace. G V G B workplace bullying, G V P earned paid leave, G C F B recruiting and hiring of administrative staff. G C F B bash R recruiting, recruiting, hiring of administrative staff, administrative procedure.
And a second? Only second? So, yes, we'll be about that next month, and then, out in flex, um, before we can reach that, that'll be, um.